Good morning. To open the public hearing, to receive comments on ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, Chapter 142, commonly known as BLIGHT. It is Monday, June 2nd, 2014, 8:30 a.m. I'm going to ask Pam Millman, who's our in-house counsel, and Dennis Johnson, who's the health director, to give a small presentation.
The revisions to the BLIGHT ordinance are basically some housekeeping revisions that also included some updates. The state legislature passed a bill allowing local health departments or local municipalities to add provisions in their local BLIGHT ordinances regarding penalties for enforcement And those provisions allow towns to assess a higher penalty for violations of the BLIGHT ordinance and also to allow the violation to be prosecuted in the local housing court authority in New Haven. That was a section of the state statute that's been incorporated into the Guilford BLIGHT ordinance. We also changed some provisions regarding citation process and notice of violation We patterned the changes similar to what our current process is with planning and zoning regulations, allowing for issuance of a notice of a violation, followed by a citation if compliance isn't obtained, and followed by the ability to issue fines and penalties to the violator. We also included a part on the ability to have hearings in front of a BLIGHT commission if there is a discrepancy or a claim that the ordinance was enforced improperly. So, in addition to that, there were some changes in the language. For instance, we alphabetized some of the definitions. We did some other minor wording changes, some of the definitions, like for instance, low-income individuals. We defined that more clearly. Just a lot of little grammatical changes, aside from the changes I talked about earlier. We also added a section where we can put a lien on real estate if a violation is not corrected each day that the penalty goes beyond the deadline. A lien can be applied to property. And that was basically it. It's just kind of updating, cleaning up, and incorporating some of the state language that was promulgated for local municipalities to add to their BLIGHT ordinances. That's basically a summary of it.
Thank you. Pam, you want to add anything?
No, I think Dennis did a very good job with outlining the changes. I mean, the only thing I would highlight is that the statute change that was made by the legislature was to give the resident an opportunity to remediate, a reasonable opportunity to remediate. So, you know, I think that's a nice, you know, a fair approach. And so, you know, first he would issue a notice and then give the, not only the, it's also you notify the occupant and the landowner, you know, because you could have a tenant in there. So, you're giving a reasonable opportunity to cure before the citation process begins. So, I think that's, that's the only thing I really wanted to highlight. The other thing is the, there are the statute that enables the state to issue a fine after, for willful violations. And that fine is in addition to what the town can issue under our own ordinance. So, the state has an ability to fine as well, as long as a town has a BLIGHT ordinance. And the state's funds, the fine that the state would issue goes into the state's funds, not the town's, so.
Isn't that nice? Who, if I wasn't clear to me, what agency of the state would be responsible for levying these fines?
Generally, it would be the state's attorney's office in New Haven. If we chose to take enforcement action to housing court in New Haven, the state's attorney would prosecute the case and the fines would be levied by them.
Okay, that's after we, so we apply.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Any, Karen?
As a practical matter, historically, Dennis, what's the amount of issues that we've had? I mean, I realize you were probably prepared to discuss this, but I mean, is it, do we have frequent BLIGHT issues in town, or?
It has been increasingly, increasing the last five to six years, mainly, I think, because of this, so many homes have been foreclosed and left in disrepair, the bank-owned homes, homes that have been walked away from become deteriorated. And, you know, a number, probably, you know, a dozen to 16 citations are issued annually.
Okay.
Really, that many?
Yeah.
All right.
And it's not just because of dilapidated homes, it's also because of trash, refuse, you know, other, you know, unsightly conditions that develop in properties. So, it's, it's a busy little regulatory process that we are involved in, but it has increased in the last eight years or so, at most.
Okay. This is still a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to ask any questions, or since we don't have much attendance, or make a comment? Okay. See none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Pam? Item two, pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cardy is going to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator. Item three, public forum, limited to three minutes regarding any agenda item. Anybody wishing to address the board? See none, we'll move on. Item four, approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes. 4 dot 1 is the regular meeting of May 19th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Comments? See none, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 4 dot 2, approval of the minutes of a special meeting on May 27, 21st. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Comments? See none, all those in favor? Aye.
Tracy abstained.
I don't see Mr. Smith or representative of the dear study committee, so with the boards...
We have a representative of the committee.
You want to wait for Harvey?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, sure. Okay. Then, with the boards' approval, I'll move to item six, town engineer. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six dot 1, receive an update on Westlake Avenue pavement improvement, local transportation caper plan improvement. Application has been approved and design has commenced for construction this fall. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. How's everybody? Good. I brought the letter of approval. I, you know, I wasn't going to write a long message on this, and we'll pass this around. We've got, made the application under the new state program, what they call the LOTZIP. It's a local program for capital improvements through the state DOT. It's an application that, as Joe well knows, we're trying to force the hand of DOT to come to the table faster than they normally would. We did get approval. It's about a million-dollar job to mill and overlay Westlake Avenue from Route 1 all the way up to the North Bradford Line. Very similar project to what we had done on North Madison Road and StepStone Hill. So, we begin, we've done that design process. We have some interaction to do with the state DOT because of the Route 1 intersection. But I hope to have the design ready by the 1st of September for bidding, and either it can get started this fall or at the latest, this spring. So, it's a, it's a, the additional good benefit is that most of our contribution, we have a, the funding is 80% federal, I mean, I'm sorry, it's 90% state and 10% local. 10%, our 10% will be covered mostly by dedicated road fund for Westlake Avenue that's been accumulated over the years. So, it won't be, it won't be a burden on the taxpayers of town. So, it, as I said, we're getting going on this. I just wanted to bring it to your attention because it's subject may come up, about, you know, people, what we're doing on Westlake Avenue. The second item, unless everybody has any questions?
Anybody have questions on that? You, Jenna said this fall, do you have any?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to try, but I mean, I do have to deal with another bureaucracy besides ours.
We don't have bureaucracy. We just have a lot of work to do.
Perceivable, yeah.
Right.
But I would like to get it done. I'd like to do it this fall.
Okay. Any questions on this? Okay, we'll move to 6 dot 2, receive an update on the elevation reconstruction of Old Quarry Road.
Okay. As of today, we have started, not exactly Saturday, we stopped putting the segmentation of erosion control measures in down at Old Quarry Road. And so, for the next month or so, we're going to be kind of going along there as best we can with the, because we have a lot of vacations. The guys have been, you know, they were plowed all winter and they didn't really have time to take much vacation. But we're going to keep a construction force down there. We'll be working on that project. And until the end of June, at which time we're going to take a short hiatus, and once the schools close, work on the Vineyard Point Road Bridge and take that down and replace that. But we have started working on it. Again, that was the subject of a lot of questions. People raised that issue, when are we going to start? I just want to let everybody know that's going to happen. Also want to go on record saying, telling that Vineyard Point Road from the intersection with St. James' Road down to, down to, basically Falcone will be closed to through traffic. People, local, people who live there know how to get around. We'll have signs up, we'll have some detour signs, but starting, basically, at the end of June, 1st of July, we'll have to have, close that road because we're going to remove the old bridge. So, I just kind of give you an update with, because there'll be, you know, there's a lot of things going on, so I just wanted to let you know about that.
Any questions? Okay. Jim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, park and recreation director, recommend 7 dot 1, consider to take possible actions on a contract for weed removal for Lake Quantapark swimming area and authorize the first selectmen to sign the contract, I should say. Good morning.
Good morning. We solicited quotes from, I think, four or five different companies for the suction, dredging, suction, harvesting at Lake Quantapark. Basically, what it does, it takes all the weeds and muck out of the swimming area. When we first got the quotes back, they were well over what was budgeted, and so we revised the quote a little bit and got, revised, went back to the two companies that had bid on. They're the only two that had responded, and there aren't very many that do this kind of work. Two in Connecticut, one was in Massachusetts and one in Vermont that we had sent out to. And so, you have the two quotes there in front of you, and they're a little different. So, basically, the bottom line is, we went back and told them we have $20,000 to do the work. Tell me how many, how many the weeds, how much weed you can get out of here and how much of the mud. And so, you'll see that one of the companies said they can get 160 cubic yards of mud, the other one 140. You may be wondering, why am I suggesting we go with the one that says they're going to get less muck out? It's because they more closely followed the spec. The specification said the mud has to be pumped out into a giant bag that they put out on the beach. It's like, it's a huge bag. They pump the mud into that, and then we have to haul that mud out after that. The other company wasn't following that spec. They were going to basically not have the mud pumped out and taken off-site. It would be deposited somewhere else in the lake.
Oh, which...
And I kind of spoke with Greg Bugby from the Connecticut Agricultural Experimental Station. He's been guiding me through this process. He's familiar with, I didn't know anything about how do you vacuum dredge a lake. And Greg was not comfortable with the mud not being taken off-site. And we have spoken with Buster Scranton, he's willing to accept the stuff, the debris in the lake as compost, so we only have to have it hauled about two miles. And hauling is not part of this group...
I was going to ask the conditions.
Because we got quotes on that too, and one of them was like $7,500 to haul it. And so, we'll either see if we can do it with town forces, or I did get a quote from another local contractor for a lot less than that. So, that would be over and above the $20,000. We'll pay for that of our maintenance budget for that. But, you know, that's the process. We, I was out there in the lake with Greg, I guess about a week ago on a Saturday, and we, we were probing to find out. We didn't really know how much mud was really in there, and on the south end, it was much as two and a half feet deep, the muck, before the probe went down to solid ground underneath that. The northern part of the swimming area was a lot less, maybe an inch or two. So, we were thinking, maybe we don't have to do anything on that part, get the weeds, but not worry about the mud so much. South end is where it's bad, two and a half feet. I mean, I don't know if somebody would step in and, you know, be up to their knees.
We'd have to pull the fire department to get them back in.
Some of us would be okay. Yeah, ain't too deep for you. Some of us would be okay.
Carry me up to his knees.
So, either company is available to start this. We told them we want them to start, you know, by Thursday, ideally this week, because it has to be done by June 18th. We're only open weekends right now, and we may have to shut down one weekend, you know, we have to do it, you know. We want to make sure this gets done and get it done right. But we told them it had to be done by the 18th. Gives us the 19th and 20th to get it out of there, the bag. And then, we're open full-time starting that weekend, which is whatever, the 21st, I think, or whatever that Saturday is. So, we want to get it done before we open full-time for the season. And it takes, they said it takes 10 days to two weeks to do the whole thing, you know. One of the companies actually scuba dives, they go down, and they're under the water with this giant hose. It's like a big vacuum hose, and it sucks out the weeds and the mud, and they pump it out onto the beach, onto the bag on the beach, so we're not messing up the sand on the beach there. So, the goal is to get it started this week and have it done by the 18th of June.
When you say get the bag in the last couple of days, you don't remove the material from the bag a little bit at a time?
No.
It's got to be a large bag of stuff that gets...
It's something like 20...
That's a drain.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay. So, you get the water out of it?
It dewatered, they'll create a little bit of a trench, so the water goes back down into the water for the, and you have to let it settle a little bit before you haul it out, otherwise you're taking a lot of water with it. And so, the water goes back into the, into the lake. So, it has to sit there for, you know, four or five days anyway before you can, and then you don't actually haul the bag. The bag gets ripped open and you go in with a backhoe or something, and you scoop it out.
There's no area where you could build a berm and that type of thing?
No, the, what we talked about setting the bag would be on the north end of the beach where it's kind of the flattest area. It has to be flat.
I just wondered about exploring, you know, expanding the shoreline by building a berm and just letting it, the spoils go there and dewater and end up being increased shoreline at some point.
One of the ideas we talked about is so we wouldn't have to close the beach, just put it on the grassy area on the south end, but there's no way to get in there with a backhoe or, you know, or a truck. So, we think, though, that while it's de-watering, we could put a construction fence around it, and we could be able to still open the swimming area. We just don't want to open while they're vacuum dredging, and if...
How long does it take, Rick, did you say?
Whole thing is about 10 days to two weeks.
Oh, is that long?
Counting the time the bag's sitting there. I mean, the vacuum dredging is less than that. So, I'm saying we might be able to be open for a few days if it's open the weekend to let it sit, and we'll just block it off with a construction fence and keep, you know, have the lifeguards make sure, keep people away from it.
That's the process.
You know, and there's also some silt that happens, you know, so we obviously don't want to have people swimming until that water's good and clear, because if somebody goes under, our guards aren't going to see them. So, that's the whole reason we want to get this done by the 18th, let it settle down a couple of days before we open up.
Rick, you're recommending New England Aquatic Services for $20,000.
Correct.
That, that was your budget?
Correct.
Where, what about the hauling?
We'll take that out of, one of the companies quoted about $2,000 for that. If we can't do it with our local, our town crews, we'll take that out of our maintenance account.
Okay. So, you're going to exceed budget?
Yeah, we'll take, but I think, yes, but the budget is for the dredging, basically, and to be able to get the rest of it, to get it out of there. I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather spend the money to get as much of the mud as we can, rather than cut back and only go 15,000 or 16,000.
No, I agree with you, but I think you got to correct yourself when you say that the budget was 20, but the job is not 20.
Okay, yeah, so we're...
I just don't want to mislead anybody.
Oh, no, no, we're going to pay out of the budgeted amount for the actual dredging, the hauling away will pay separately.
Okay.
It's not part of their contract to do the hauling.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And based on Mr. Fortley's comments a few moments ago, it doesn't sound like you're going to, there's a lot of availability for public work.
Yeah.
I can tell you right now.
We talked, that's why I talked to another company to see what would it cost if we hadn't hired you to do it.
Okay. And Pam, this, even if we add the 2,000 to this, it's still within the purchasing guidelines that we don't have to go out to bid because it doesn't exceed 25,000. Okay. You have any comment?
Nope.
Okay.
He's gone over this with me, so I'm comfortable.
Okay. I guess I'll entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve the contract for New England Aquatic Services as presented and hope it gets done by the 18th.
Second.
Second, I think we have to add that for the $20,000.
Well, okay.
Any discussion on the motion?
I just thought you said 19.5. Are you going to go to 20?
No, I was, yeah, it was the other company.
That's all habitat.
Oh, okay, all right.
Any further discussion of questions? Not a call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the fire chief.
Joe, just a comment while they're coming up. I know you've had some discussions with DEP about sort of the bigger project at Quantapark.
Yeah.
What's happening? Can you comment on what, or do you want to take that later in old business?
No, I'd be happy to comment now while they're coming to the table. We met with DEP, what was it, guys, three weeks ago, almost a month ago?
A month.
Yeah. Up in Hartford with our state legislators. DEP is not very excited about us drawing down the lake. However, they have agreed to come down this summer and to study the lake before they give us a final approval or tell us that we have to do something else.
Not excited because there are other consequences to drawing down the lake?
Correct, correct. There are aquatic, other aquatic plants, there's a fish issue that we're going to destroy some of the fishing there.
Nothing's simple.
Nothing is simple. Nothing's easy.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, you all. I had her, yeah, okay. You said he was on his way, right? Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Well, as the board remembers, we received a port security grant for the, for the fire boat. We're now before the board to request permission to purchase the boat off of GSA, the federal GSA list, from Metalcraft Marine, which is located in Kingston, Ontario, Canada. The committee has done extensive research on the vessel that we're trying to purchase, and this is the vessel that they would like to have. This vessel was purchased by New Haven, Nollwalk, Mystic, Bridgeport, and several other ones in the state of Connecticut. So, next on the vessel, I think it served the town very well. So, we need to purchase it off the, off the, get your permission to buy it off the GSA and go forward from there. I'll answer any questions. If not, the committee's here.
Pam, and this, this is essentially waiving the bidding on this.
Well, what we're doing, we're doing two pieces today. That's what I come up later on in that, or we're going to...
We could have reversed the agenda.
Right, exactly. We're going to modify our purchasing policy to allow to purchase off the GSA. So, so it's really not a waiver, it's just going to comply with our policy, so you could vote now to...
Well, it's a waiver until we change the policy.
Right, or you just say, subject to revising the policy.
We can, if we pass it, we will.
Right.
We're fine. Yeah, okay. Chief, two questions. What was the price that we originally discussed?
The actual grant was $450,000. On the boats that we're looking at, before we get finished with, the board has the list, the preliminary pricing is $458,112.18. You got to add $6,000 for the blast speed. Yeah, for the, okay.
For the what?
For the, it's...
Instead of painting it, it's finished. Oh, okay.
Yeah, and which is, which I know we do that with the fire trucks, we blast speed it, because then you don't have to worry about ship pain or anything else, so.
Do you remember the number that we were using?
450 was the amount of the grant.
Oh, 50. That was the grant, but I thought...
We got, we received $337,000.
337.
Right.
So, 450 was the number we discussed.
Right, right.
I guess my impression was a little more than that.
No, no.
That's what was in the capital budget.
Right, and we're, in these, I've discussed this with Pam in regards to, boats don't get built without down payments. So, we're requesting, or recommending, that we put 50% down using the federal money. We've had a discussion about performance bonds. The federal government doesn't include performance bonds or bid bonds or payment bonds within their schedule. And all the other fire chiefs that I've spoken with in the state did not use any performance bonds or payment bonds or anything of the sort. So, I guess that's where we are.
Okay. Just kind of bring, remind the board, we had in the capital budget 450,000, and the chief is correct in saying that the federal grant was 370,000.
337.
337.
337.
I'm sorry, so I've been correct. And that in the capital budget on their operating expenses, we had $60,000, which is there. Now, the remainder is coming from where?
We have done commitments from two commissioners in town. We have...
Shellfish, I think.
Shellfish and Marina Commission of $10,000 each. We have $30,000 coming from the emergency management grant, which we've got, and we have $10,000 from private donations, 5,000, 2,500 from the St. James' Association, I believe is, and 2,500 from the yacht club.
Okay.
And we're still pursuing more donations.
Okay. So, I, question I'm asking is the 60 that was approved in the 2015 capital budget is fine.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions?
So, I just added up what you got. You're like close to 470.
No, there's only, you add the other bottom line in.
60, 20, 30, 10, 5.
Which numbers are you using?
Well, you said 337, and then you said it's about 458, you know, or something.
Right.
And then if you get 60 operating, 20, Shellfish and Marina, 30,000 emergency grant, 10,000 private, and then 5 grant total with the yacht club and the St. James' heads, like you're there.
Right.
It's 4, yeah, it's 462.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, comments?
And my understanding is you have agreements with Marina and Shellfish that they can use the boat as appropriate.
Oh, yeah, which we've, we've always done that. There is, we've been very helpful with the Shellfish Commission, as they have been with us, and same with Marina Commission.
Well, I know it's a real plus for them because their boat wasn't effective in the winter, they have to go test. Your boat is.
We are presently using that boat.
Well, I know you are.
We concur.
It's not a winter, it's not a winter boat, yours is.
It's a fair weather boat.
Lead time on the boat?
Eight months?
Six to nine months.
Six to nine months.
Okay. Very good. I'll entertain a motion. Is there a second? Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Good job to your committee.
Yep.
They're good committee.
Pam, why don't we take you now? Since we can piggyback on this. Okay, item nine, nine dot one, consider to take possible action on authorizing first electmen to sign a contract for goods and services that are under the bid threshold amount of $25,000 and foreign review by in-house counsel. Why don't we take that one first?
Okay. This deals with, this is actually a result of the fact that we did revise our purchasing policy in the fall, as you know, and the bid threshold is now 25,000 and greater. So anytime we have a purchase that exceeds that amount, you know, the department head would come to you and you'd get approval, and you would approve and you would authorize Joe to sign the contracts. So what we're trying to do is kind of fill the gap now that's created with those purchases that are, you know, less than 25,000, and under our current policy, the department heads have to get three written estimates, and they get to select based on their expertise, you know, and experience which one they want, and then they come to me and I make sure that they satisfy the insurance requirements and the contract requirements. So rather than, and one of the reasons for the revision of the purchasing policy had to deal with, you know, just giving the departments more flexibility and a shorter timeframe that they sometimes need to purchase goods. So rather than have the department need to come in each time, even though there's not a required bidding, to get authorization for Joe to sign the contract, this would make a more efficient situation so that Joe could just be, be authorizing Joe to sign these estimates, these contracts that are below 25,000, kind of a blanket authorization so the department doesn't have to come in each time.
And before the threshold was 5,000, right? The increase was 25?
7,500.
I can comment. I strenuously object to this. I just think when we passed the policy, and you know I was in favor of raising the threshold because I think there are costs in low bids to the bidders, but I assumed in the process that it would, there would be a public viewing, which is what the board of selectmen. A bid process, for better or for worse, is public. Everything that's there is accessible. Not that it isn't, I guess on a freedom of information, we could come and...
No doubt.
And all that process. But I just think having loosened the threshold, this makes it less transparent, and these amounts between 7,500 and 25,000 should come to the board of selectmen for review. That's the way I feel.
I tend to agree with you on that. Okay, that's, even though we don't have to approve the actual bid, I think a review to contract should be done by this board, so I do agree with you on that.
I agree, Gary. My first thought was if we're moving towards this, at least there'd be notification to the board of what was being approved.
Right.
By the first electmen. Because I agree with you, Gary, that, you know, otherwise how are we going to know that these were increased amounts, you know? Because it, like you said, you could do an FBI, but unless you know what you're, you wouldn't even know what the question asked.
Those are all valid.
So, I mean, then I would agree with Gary.
If we're going to review it, we might as well approve it.
I don't disagree, yeah. So, yeah.
Can we amend that? I mean, if you agree.
Do anything you want.
I think we, I would recommend that we...
We don't have to do anything.
We do nothing.
Or call if you want to change it.
You have an amendment. I just think we pass on it. We do nothing.
You don't approve it.
And you can also just state for the record that you would, you're wanting to approve each contract that is below 25,000, because that's kind of, you may want to just put that on the record.
And above 7,500.
And above 7, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's already there.
All right, I would make a motion that bids, that contracts for goods and services between 7,500 and 25,000 come before the board of selectmen for approval.
Second.
Good. Discussion. The only thing I would say is that I think it's, this board is owed the opportunity to hear from the department head why they want to go ahead with that contract.
And we also understand that it probably increases a special meeting or two a year because there's a timeliness to it, so we show up for a special meeting, but that's okay.
Just like what you just learned with Rick's purchase, you know, that gave you input.
Right, and that's okay.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Pam, nine dot two, discuss and take possible action on amending the purchasing policy to permit purchase off of the GSA General Services Administration and South Central Council of Governments awarded contract list.
This is being generated, obviously, by the Fire Department wanting to purchase off the GSA, and Charles did contact FEMA and GSA contacts to determine whether municipalities can contract off of the GSA, and was instructed in writing that if it's part of the purchasing policy of the municipality or the purchasing procedures, then they may. So that's, and there probably are exclusions, that not everything on the GSA is open to municipalities, I'm pretty sure that is correct.
Except by submarines.
Exactly. So...
You have the money. That was a helicopter.
Let's not get into that.
Don't even.
Don't even joke.
A drone.
Pam?
So that's what I'm proposing, if you would agree to amend the purchasing policy, just to add that you have the freedom, the departments have the freedom to purchase off the GSA. It works like the state contract, they'd still have to come to you, you know, if it meets the threshold. And also, Joe had suggested that we also, while we're doing it, add the South Central Regional Council of Governments as, because they are, based on some preliminary meetings, trying to coordinate their own consortium bidding. As you all know, we already participate in the Capital Regional Council of Governments, that consortium, which is already input in our purchasing policy, and that's been very successful, so now we're just adding a couple of more type of consortium bidding that...
Yeah, our cog, which, South Central Council of Governments, which we belong to with 14 other towns, is, saw the value of what the Capital Region is doing, and I was amazed to hear from other towns that they don't all take advantage of what the cog, the Capital Region is doing. So the, our council decided to take a look at it, so we get benefit of regional purchasing, so to speak. And while we're updating the policy to include the GSA, I said, let's do the our cog at the same time, because it's going to happen at some point.
Right.
So we don't have to redo it.
I like it, doesn't mandate it, but it gives us opportunity, which is good.
It does, it does.
So I'll move that we amend the policy to permit purchases off of GSA in South Central as on the contract list.
Second. Any further discussion? Gary?
The only comment I would make is that we apply a bit of skepticism, particularly with the GSA list, that, you know, there's, we all hear stories about contractors who get special government deals, and they turn out to be higher than everything else, and so we have to look at, we still have to look at it and, you know...
Just like you do, the critical eye to the state, bidding off the state, because that's why, that's in our policy, so that the department comes to you and you may say, well, that's not a great price, go out on, you know, go out to bid, even though it's worth it.
But I think that, I support the motion, just play with skepticism.
Any further discussion or comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Pam. Okay, I see we're all in attendance now, so I'll go back to item five. ERP deer study committee chairman, Harvey Smith, five dot one, received from the East River Preserve Deer Study Committee on Deer Management Plan for the East River Preserve. Harvey? All those. Bring the committee with you.
Gary, we've seen you before. You make you an honorary member, you know.
I didn't recognize you with the tie.
Piss in my disguise.
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. As you know, this has been a long time coming. This was one of our goals, was to finally put in your packet, our report. I guess I'd like to just briefly start with complimenting the board of selectmen two years ago that tabled what was a controversial part of the East River Preserve, and that had to do with the hunting aspect or the killing of deer on the site. And that allowed to take a very in-depth, detailed, very serious, committed look at that issue. That gave us, we've worked on this for two years. The first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank the committee, very dedicated, an excellent committee was selected by the board of selectmen to look critically at that issue. And we had a charge to come up with a safe and feasible management plan. Safety was certainly part of every discussion we had, and that was the reason that it wasn't accepted originally when the first plan came out for you guys two years ago. And that plan, our goal and the commitment was to not only come up with a safe and feasible one, but one that was compatible with the eight goals that you did approve in that With the exception of this one, what do you do with an increasing deer population? You can't have one of your goals, your first one, without having a practical deer management plan. You can't have one without the other. So we began, like I said, two years ago, about the first six months, listening. We threw it open for discussion, and we had, I had every member of the committee suggest experts, and we brought in the best experts we could have, and for like six months, we listened.
Six or eight.
We kept our mouths quiet and we listened. We wanted to hear from the experts first. We were not a bunch of nine experts seated to do the best we could. We certainly did do the best we could, and I think we exceeded that, to tell you the truth. You guys have in your packet an excellent, well-drafted, well-thought-out document that hopefully can be improved. Is it a perfect document? I would say no. I don't think anybody can write a perfect document. But with the eyes and ears of the public and the people that make an ecological commitment to make this perfect and have input, and those that visit the site are going to be an ongoing part of this. One of the biggest things we wanted to listen to and understand were not recycling our own personal view. This is a, anything that involves the taking of an animal's life or the management, wildlife ecology is an interesting science. It's a science that the public thinks they know as much as the experts do, which complicates it. 200 years ago, you had two values to wildlife, they're either good or bad. Now we've got about eight. We've added some significant ones, important ones, that moved with our lifestyles. But that makes it a lot more difficult to make the right decision. So you, we have two choices here, to make the right decision or basically no decision. Deer management has few alternatives. We discussed birth control. Well, that's ineffective on an open population, population that come in and go. You'd go, the town would go broke to finance a program like that, and it's very ineffective. So it comes down to, well, do we just let nature take its course? And we've altered nature so much that there's not much nature left out there that's, it's up to us as stewards to make the right management decisions and take our charge seriously like we did and preserve the integrity of the ecosystem. We all know we're dealing with six hundred acres of a unique ecosystem, probably the biggest one that Guilford had left. So anyways, we continued to listen, and then after we put all those pieces together, then it was time to discuss in depth, criticize, discuss, listen to everyone's comments, and then after another, as we approached into our second year, it was time to put together the document. What I think is really important for the public to realize, that this document now is not saying, okay, this is what the board of selectmen has to do. This is our recommendations that were carefully put together, and it's open-ended. Part of this, as you know, you've read it, is a review system that goes with our plans. Will it work? We certainly hope it will, but it certainly will with the support and the input from everybody who wants to make it better. It's the best starting point I've seen on a program. We heard from the regional water company, we've heard from people who had the same assignment or the same task that we did. What are we going to do with the increasing deer population? Audubon, out of Greenwich, we had their director come. She faced the same situation with a large part of the population, not comfortable with the idea. There's a wonderful article, if people haven't seen it, Public, as well recently, and this is not a Guilford problem, it's a national problem. What are we going to do? We've lost the predators that we used to rely on to hold populations down are gone, or at least as far as their feasible impact that they can have on mortality. So we progressed to put this thing together, and we have this check system where after three years, it's going to be evaluated. Is it working? Can we see some improvement in the site? We've also got it open so that outside people with an interest in cooperating with either disclosures or scientifically, whether it's grad students at Yale or this DEEP, they can have their window of opportunity here to help us with this program. But we're, we want this reviewed. Kevin is probably going to curse us a few times when he inherits some of the obligations and commitments that are going to go with this, to make this work. But the Conservation Commission should have a hand in this for doing surveys and submitting reports, bringing updates to the, excuse me, the board of selectmen is going to be crucial through this process, and every three years, review it. And after a couple of cycles, if it's not working, let's change what we can change, and if it completely fails and after several years, there's no improvement, you could even drop the program. This is not something carved in granite to say, this is how it's going to be, and we really want the input from everybody. We've certainly made an honest, in-depth second look, and I say second look because the committee that wrote, well, there's a copy of it sitting down at the end here. We have so streamlined their recommendations, and Bill, I'm going to let you say some words about how we've gotten to that point. At one point in our preparation of the document, we formed a subcommittee to then look specifically. We were fortunate to have on the committee, Bill, a conservation officer with the state. I'm glad you're here with me this morning to bail me out on questions that they may have, but if you want to hit some highlights and what went into that sheet.
We, what we did was we took the initial recommendation that was in the management plan, which basically opened the property as though we were a private landowner that had a limit of the number of people we'd allow. It followed all state regulations without further restricting much of anything. We took that, and we took the public concerns with safety, with noise, with incidents of running into hunters, and I guess, personal viewpoint differences, and we restricted further. What the state says is you can't waive any of these laws, but you can add to them. So as the town is the landowner of this property, the town can add further restrictions. You guys have the draft, you've seen it, just some key points that we found. We limited the season, October 15th to November 15th, you know, it's... You know, it's not going to be, the state archery hunting season runs from September fifteenth to February first along the shoreline is the closing day, or January thirty-first. We restricted it further so that people aren't worried that over the course of four months, they're going to go in and encounter a hunter. They have one month where if someone adamantly says, I won't share the woods, it's only one month that they have to be concerned. With that in mind, we put a restriction that all hunters will hunt from a tree stand. They won't be moving, they'll be in a stationary position, and that tree stand will be 250 feet from a marked trail. I've been in there at that time of year. If you can see someone 250 feet away from the marked trail, you've got to be looking for them. Really push this to be an out-of-sight thing, so that someone who wants to walk their dog or hike on the trail or use the property passively won't be bothered by this. Added into it that it will only be open on weekdays, and only until, do we say 11:30 or noon?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty. So, anyone coming after work to use this, kids coming after school, hunters would be out of the woods, there wouldn't be a conflict. It would not be open to hunting on days that school is not in session or on weekends. So the heaviest recreation times for mountain bikers and hikers and dog walkers, we've actually closed it to hunters to avoid conflicts. On top of that, you know, one of the issues we have is, are we going to have, who are we going to have here? We've put in that anyone that applies for this would have to sign a release that, I think it would fall to Guilford PD to run a background, but to run a records check if they had any sort of past history. I think, I don't know if we specified exactly, but anything that the Board of Selectmen or whoever is selecting the hunters is not comfortable with letting that person use the property in this way, that they would be willing to say, you know what, I'm going to open my background, whatever's there, you know about, so you have full disclosure of who you're allowing to do this on the property. A lot of those things, we've seen, like Harvey said, we saw at least five different groups. And some of those things, those groups said they wish they could add, but they couldn't get passed. So for us to get this in here and get it agreed upon by everybody in the committee was really huge. We created a proficiency test, I guess you would call it, and we mirrored that off of the Regional Water Authority, Connecticut Water Authority, whichever, Regional Water Authority.
Regional Water.
We heard from three different ones, it's hard to keep them straight. But they run the hunt in North Branford, a very similar property, very similar size. And they have actually offered to help us administer that test in the beginning so that we meet the same standard they do for proficiency until we can find people that will take it over and run it separately for us. I think that's pretty much.
That's for Kevin.
Yeah. Those are the big things I wanted to touch on, is those are really, I mean, and having to enforce it and having worked in some of the areas that some of these hunts go on, sometimes it's difficult, and you look at things and you say, I wish they would have added this, I wish they would let us know about this. This plan really covers top to bottom. And I believe we put a provision in there that a list of all hunters, their vehicles, and a copy of their hunting license would be given to not only Guilford Police, but to my department, who does specifically hunting law enforcement. So should there be any problems, we would be available to come in and assist.
I just have a question about the licensing piece. So if they already have to get a hunting license, what additional work does that put on Joe, the Guilford PD? I mean, are they doing an additional background? I guess I'm confused.
No. They would already have to have a hunting license, which means that DEEP has already approved them through their background. This would be a computer check to see if the person had any kind of a violent crime or a misdemeanor or something.
Would they have been able to get the license in the first place if that was the case?
Depending on the type of license and depending on when the crime was committed, if they had a current license before they had committed such a crime, they can renew their license without going back to the class. That it's a glitch in the system that's never, never been done, and because it's written into state statute, every time it goes up, something gets attached to it and it gets shut down.
Right. And then I'm only concerned legally, like where's the subjectivity coming? Like, who's going to monitor that to say, well, you had an assault, so you're not going to be able to hunt, but your assault was against this person, but you're okay because this was, I mean, a bar fight. I mean, where?
That, I don't know. I know at one point, we had looked into making a list of what crimes would and what wouldn't, and what we found was there were so many little minor things, and then the list became the size of the entire thing. Well, does this count? Does that count?
No, I know. That's my only concern, Harvey. Who's going to be the responsibility of saying, no, you can't hunt on the land for this month?
Before you answer that, I have a question. How often do licenses have to be renewed? Is it yearly?
Yearly.
Yes.
Yeah. Licenses are renewed yearly.
And there are, I'm not a hunter, obviously, there is a different license for bow versus...
Yes, yeah, it's a separate class for archery hunting.
Okay. So what you're suggesting is that the Guilford, on top of the state granting a license, the Guilford PD do a background check?
People have to apply to hunt on this specific land, is what you're saying?
Yeah, what we've suggested is, we said, twenty? We said we would take and author a permit to 20 hunters. In order to legally hunt any property that's not owned by the state of Connecticut, you need to carry a permission slip. The permission slip is dual-purpose. It allows them to hunt.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that part. That's typical. I'm just saying, like, where's the subjectivity? I mean, I think...
Yeah.
Because I could see the chief going, okay, Joe, what do I do? I mean, what Board of Selectmen, what do we do? I mean, who's, that's my only concern. I'm not, I don't have a problem with the permissions. We do that in fishing, we do that, you know, you have to get the first 20 people or the first hundred people, whatever.
Yeah.
I just, I'm saying...
Did you want to cover anything on the liability, since there's no fees involved?
Yeah, that was, the permission slip is very big for the town.
The liability's not on the shoulder of the town.
By signing that permission slip, it allows the hunter to hunt there legally, but attached to that permission slip is a state statute releasing the landowner of any liability caused by the hunting, so long as we do not charge for that permit. If we had any fee whatsoever, we assume the liability of anyone on the property. If we freely give this, we can have a selection process, we can go through and choose and do a lottery, however we choose the 20 people, as long as they don't have to pay any money for it, we're released of liability caused by their hunting on the property.
I think that was legislation that was passed last couple of years.
Yeah, I think it was two years ago.
Because I remember CCM, Conference of Connecticut Municipalities, lobbied hard to make sure that the towns were exempt from the liability, if you didn't charge. You're right.
Yeah.
And that's the same...
That started in Lower Fairfield County, where a lot of towns have adopted.
And that's the same statute we use for any of our parks or the green or anything like that.
Yeah, any free recreation is...
Okay.
Sidney, my reaction to your question, and I think there's a couple others, there are some implementation steps that need to be made with departments that weren't part of this, that weren't attending this. So I mean, there will be, there will have to be some implementation steps that are put in place, and one of them is to communicate with the police department and, you know, use their guidance on this background check information.
And again, we're just accepting the report. We're not going to be acting on anything today.
This is a plan, like I've said a couple of times here, that can be improved. This is a draft.
And no, and listen, it's very good. I just think about, you know, that's my only concern with what you're saying, is that had, you know, that part of it, because then where's the direction? But the rest of it, I don't have an issue with.
Before we get to Kevin, what is the policy, state-owned, for hunting in West Woods?
The sections of West Woods that are open for state hunting, and I actually brought these if any of you guys wanted, the hunting guides, so I'll leave these with you guys.
We can make copies for the rest of the board.
I think there's some down on the...
Yeah. The sections that are open are listed on state map. I actually don't have them with me, I have them in the car. I believe they're open firearms hunting because of the distance from the houses. I don't know what, because the Westwood Trail System goes through town property before you access that state property, I'm not aware, and Kevin might know, what the town policy is on transporting the firearms or the archery equipment into and out of the area, but that area is open to anyone holding a valid Connecticut, I believe it's, I believe it's open to any type of hunting, so a valid Connecticut hunting license, deer permit, turkey, waterfowl, whatever additional permit needed for the animal they're hunting, that once they are on that property, if they've paid for that additional stamp, in the case of something, you know, duck stamp is what they call it, or deer license or tag, once they get onto the state property with that license, they're allowed to move within that entire section of the property and hunt per state law.
But only for the species that they...
Yeah, only for the species that they hold a current license.
And what is the current season? I'm sure it changes for the type of animal, right?
Currently, actually, we just finished spring turkey season, which ran from the, I think it was the third week in April to the end of May, which is a shotgun-allowed season. Duck season changes every year, it comes out through federal regulation, so I haven't even picked up the current copy yet, but that's in the fall and through the winter. Duck and goose, goose season will run into, sometimes into February or March, depending on what the federal regulation is.
And all this is allowed in Westwood?
All of that is allowed on that state-owned property. And then deer season is typically the third Thursday, or third Wednesday in November through, usually it's three weeks for shotgun, or on private land, rifle will be allowed, but the state only allows shotgun. And then a muzzleloader season running from the last day, or the day after the last day of shotgun season until the end of the year. Archery, deer hunting is also allowed September fifteenth through the end of January.
So we're talking a much abbreviated season here.
Yeah, what we're doing here is, I would say, if you looked at that section of West Woods, there's probably, probably close to six months of legal hunting days that people can go in and hunt.
I know none of you is a lawyer, so, but I'm just curious, I'm sure Pam's going to check this out, but the fact that the state charges for the license, does that still exempt the town's liability?
It does. Because of the way it's set up, the permission slip, when the state charges for the license, that allows you to hunt within the state, the permission slip allows you to hunt within that property. So because we're granting the free permission on that slip within that property, we're covered from liability.
Okay. Good, thank you. Kevin?
I guess just for the record, Joe, we're only discussing deer removal here. I mean, I get, I know, but the public is watching. I get phone calls, it's just going to allow turkey hunting, can we, you know, no, you can't shoot koalas or anything else. But for the record, it's important that we're very specifically on a deer reduction feasible management plan here.
And the other point to that is, this is also only for one property of the Conservation Commission's property, it's just the East River Preserve at this point in time. It's not, the Timberlands, it's not the North Woods, it's just for the East River Preserve at this time. And then seeing how this goes, the Conservation Commission always make a recommendation to either expand the program or to reduce the program. So it's a trial for the town of Guilford. The bow and arrow is indicated probably one of the safer methods to use in other, getting stronger, stronger forces out of them, but you're up in a tree stand, and the important thing is you're shooting down at an angle towards the ground instead of straight out where this thing go uninhibited for who knows how far. So all the safety measures have been kind of put in place and looked at, the distance from the trails have been looked at. The 11:30 time means hunter has to be out of the woods, it's not like they're active hunting and going to stop with the bow at that point in time, it means they have to be out of the woods, which means, most likely, you're saying probably 10:30 or so will be the last shot taken because they need time to capture the animal and bring it back out to their car, which depending how deep they are, could take a while to do that.
I thought I read in here that if they have not dressed the deer, you know, by 11:30, they'd have to walk out and put their weapons back in the car.
Correct.
Or the bow, no, sorry.
Yeah.
Back in the car, and then they can come back.
Change their clothes out of their camouflage, or whatever colors they're wearing, and come back out. I mean, the plan meets the intent of the East River Preserve Management Plan that we came up with several years ago. It has, it said with the studies requested as part of it, helps ensure, gives steps to check the performance of the policy by creating some enclosures which can be monitored by Conservation Commission or the ACT station, or DEEP, or Yale officials there. So this group did a great job, I said they reached out to a lot of people, for and against, I mean, the outside of towns, I mean, looking at, like you said, Audubon, Fish and Wildlife Service, the regional water companies, they even touched base with a professor at Yale who spoke at the, provided testimony as part of the East River Preserve Plan originally, which was kind of provided statements against the deer hunting policy as was written before. So the commission even listened to, like I said, all sides of that before they got down and put this document together. So the commission really did a great job.
So the way I read it is that it's an ongoing study?
Absolutely.
Okay. And that we're going to, then, you know, it's a study that...
No more committees.
It's ongoing, and we can change it at any time, but I'm glad to hear that somebody's going to be responsible for saying it works, it doesn't work, but we have to tweak it or whatever.
I mean, the Conservation Commission may, as a subcommittee, put on a deer management or deer study committee which oversees this property, and other properties, is the need for more management as needed, or deciding, is it working or not working? So it might be where three people might act as a subcommittee to the Conservation Commission as guidance, because it's, it is somewhat technical, some of the information here, and we may need, the commission may need some experts to help them out on that.
So you're suggesting... Kevin, my suggestion, well, not suggestion, but caution or concern that's going to fall in your lap. Ecologically, depredation.
That the Conservation Committee take this on.
They have responsibility for managing these.
These river, and they're also going to take on the hunting, and Gary, I think you had mentioned to me, that when we get our lands, that would be in the job description.
Yes.
And I think you've noted it in the minutes here.
Yes.
Yeah.
And also, I kind of asked at the last meeting if some members of this committee would continue to stay on an advisory capacity, and a number of them indicated that they would.
Towards the other, just as an aside, are there openings? I think there's openings.
There are openings in the Conservation.
There's four openings in the Conservation.
Yeah, no, I do.
That would be great if some of them went on.
But Joe, what I was going to say, when the review times come around, three years, six years, nine years, as we go into the future, it's going to take some good observation. Kevin's going to need some help. Some people can walk through after a hurricane and not see anything wrong. And I'm not trying to be funny, but everyone has an ability to perceive, Gary, you've walked the site with us. Some people walk through, many people walk through here and say, why are we even considering this? Gee, it looks fine. I see leaves, I see trees. To evaluate what has taken place, maybe there's some rare orchids that have disappeared. Like that was one of the examples that Audubon presented to us, when they were faced with the very same problem, they put enclosures up and they brought in some deer removal hunters with bows. These plants have now come back, but it takes a trained botanist or trained eye to become and share valuable information that the next Board of Selectmen will need to hear from, or the one after that. It's not just going to be, is it a simple, is it working? Gee, it looks like it's working. It's going to take, and Carl, you know, you were an educator for a long time, you know, I guess we're... you know, I guess we're all still educated, we're still learning.
Right.
Um, but this is gonna be an ongoing learning process that's gonna take a lot of people that are really committed to it. And that, that's really what I wanna say.
And this may be one of those things too with all the studies that were, that are out there, is first couple of years, there might be a high number of them taken out, but as the program was on, there might be two or three or very little as you're maintaining the herd in there. So it's, um.
But you're also limited by hunter, how much.
Um, how many a hunter can, can have in the season, am I correct?
Yes, yeah.
Is that statewide?
Um, yes, statewide, depending on the area you're in, um, you're only allowed a certain number. The, the baseline is four deer per hunter with archery equipment. Um, there are, there's replacements and other things that, that fall further into it, um, given the area and the deer population and if it's high and what DEP's goals are, but those are subject to change every year.
I, I guess, now, being an officer, how, how do you monitor that? That he might kill two deer here and maybe two more in Fairfield County and?
All, all deer are required to be checked with DEP. You can do it online, they can do it on the phone, or they can go to a check station. Um, and any deer has to have a, a deer confirmation number with it, within twenty-four hours of harvest. So we have a database that says this person has checked, has, has admitted to legally harvesting X number of deer. And then if something doesn't look right, we'll actually go to the house, or if they go to a butcher shop, a lot of times butcher shops will call us and say, hey, this came in and, and something's not right, or this number is the same on two different animals. And we do a lot of, a lot of digging around and investigating on that type of thing. Um, which is, is why I really wanted, and I was happy that we put in, that a list of these hunters would go to our agency so that the officers working in the area can keep an eye on that and make sure that, okay, if this hunter is tagged, you know, two deer on the East River Reserve, he hasn't tagged four deer in Branford, because that's where else he hunts.
Now, um, I, I might have missed it, but is this only for bucks or?
No, we, actually, um, w- when we talk to the other, other areas, I know Regional Water Authority actually encourages does, um, for population reduction, it's more effective to harvest the does. We didn't end up putting an incentive in here because we weren't sure how that was gonna play out. Uh, Regional Water Authority tells them if they harvest a doe, they're guaranteed a tag the next year. That, you know, they don't have to go through the selection process again. And we didn't wanna create a system where anyone would be bypassed and could get themselves into this, and if they were a problem, we had already guaranteed them a future permit. So we didn't put that in there.
Also, we're putting out so few, I think it's an opportunity for more people. You know, I think it would be, I don't know, if you were handing out two hundred of them, that'd be one thing, but.
Yeah, but handing out twenty is.
Yeah.
So they can kill, um, any type of deer?
Any, yeah, any type of deer. Um, again, we, what we did was with the harvest, it would follow state regulations as far as number and, you know, state, the, the state regulation says you can't kill a fawn with spots on it, and you, you know, it's not, they're not looking for babies, but any mature deer would be harvested. And, and in the pre-hunt meeting that we, um, have set up, we would recommend and encourage to take, to harvest the does, because that's, you know, that's what fits with our deer population management.
But Bill, you, you just mentioned adult deer.
Yes.
So we're limited to adults.
Yeah, well, by state law, you're limited. If they, yeah, fawns that still have spots are not allowed. That's a whole separate.
Okay.
Charge.
You can see I'm not a hunter, sorry.
So how does it work? Because I'm not a hunter either. So how does it work, like, so you kill the deer, how do they know, know that you've killed the deer? Like, what do you do? Call somebody to say?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a twenty-four hour, um, line that you can register, or you can go to, and I believe the closest one is Old Saybrook.
So what if somebody doesn't do that?
You hire me.
No, I mean, it doesn't happen?
That's why he's on the.
No, I'm just saying, like, how do they, because I know you're limiting, so.
Yeah, um, it, it does happen. We, we spend a lot of time in the woods checking, a lot of time at cars making sure and, and checking on people. And I have.
Follow-up.
Notebooks in my car with a, a name, a hunting license number, and a date that I saw them with the deer, and then I go back the next day and check, and had they not registered, then we go knock on their door.
Okay.
It's a lot of legwork.
Okay.
How, how many offices do we have in this area?
Um, this zone currently has four officers and a sergeant assigned with an additional two or three that live in the area but work other areas. We're on call.
You are on call.
Yeah, we're on, we're on call twenty-four seven, so.
Kevin, you have a second?
Yeah, as part of, once we, if we do approve a policy and we institute it, is that the DEP likes us, or DEEP now, like, would like us to actually notify them of our hunt schedule so they can have their officers in the area monitoring it, and that would help, would that number count?
So that would be a state function. We wouldn't have to have our own enforcement officers.
No, yeah, we, we would still enforce all the hunting laws as DEP. Um, the way it's worked with the Aquarian Water Company is they would, they give a list. You know, that's what we suggested, is a list of all hunters, their vehicles, and there would be a, you know, even just a slip of paper that they would put in the windshield when they go in there to go hunting. Given that list, um, when I worked in Lower Fairfield County, as soon as that hunt started, that became an unofficial priority. Um, officially, if it was a priority, it requires funding, but as an unofficial priority, it, it steers the officers into an area where they know there's people to check, where they know there's something going on. So the focus becomes, okay, this area, and especially with a new program, this area's new, we wanna make sure there's a presence, we wanna make sure people know that we're here and we're watching and we're aware of what's going on. Um, by giving that list, y- y- you almost guarantee that there'll be an officer there, if not every day, every other day at the least, because we know. Instead of driving around and looking for a, a car on the side of the road that might be hunting or might have broken down last night, we know when you go there, there's a hunter, you're gonna talk to him, you're gonna see what's going on. And we get a lot of our information from hunters. Um, if, if there is something going on, if there's people without permission on the property, the, the first people that let us know are the hunters. So if we know that stopping at this car is gonna get us in interaction with a hunter, that's where we get our information from. So that's gonna encourage guys, without us having to pay them, to come in or hire an overtime patrol. We can just tell them, look, this is, there's gonna be guys here, and you're gonna be able to get information, and they'll be there.
The one regret I have for this committee, which did a wonderful job, is that we didn't have the foresight to have Mike or somebody else.
Take some.
Here, that particularly the date that the water company, the regional water company was in, because that was a very compelling presentation of, A, the ecological issues and what has been cured by their policy, and also the safety issues. I just, you know, it was a, it was an extremely valuable presentation. Gary, that may be something that the Fortis Selectmen might wanna consider bringing back. Maybe. As we now, we wanna be totally open to the public. There's, there, this is gonna be still something that a few will never accept. Many will join on as it proves itself out to be the right choice, and others are, are fine with it to start with. This is one of those issues that's, but you, you raised, excellent, that, that was probably the best presentation we had, because it went beyond just too many deer. It, it went, went into water quality, the runoff, all, all the other spinoffs that are part of this ecological integrity that we're trying to save. That was an excellent presentation that would be helpful for the town.
Right.
To listen to, following the decision that comes out of the board and where this plan goes.
Yeah.
That, that should definitely.
I'm, I'm really glad to hear that, because obviously I'm Guilford's rep on, on that of.
We had excellent speakers.
And, uh, you know, we struggled with that for years before we actually started to allow hunters. And, uh, two things, uh, the comments I make when you were talking about the environment, it, when we were preparing to allow hunting, one of the presentations, and you spoke of it, and I think in one of your minutes, about how they set up fields, the Water Authority set up areas where no deer were allowed, and they watched it for a couple of years, and the difference of the changes of the environment.
This is part of the program, some enclosures, so we can see what's, what's happening.
The other point that was really telling is the first year, it was obviously very controversial and, uh, very well attended or whatever, but it has leveled off. I, I don't know whether the deer have gotten smarter and disappeared or what, but it has leveled off to a norm, uh, where it is simply controlling the, the population is what it comes down to. It, you know, the first year or two, it was, uh, you know, more deer were harvested than anticipated, and there was an overflow of people that wanted to get permits and that type of thing. But it has leveled off, and, uh, uh, you know, a certain number of people come back every year, so a lot of the regulatory stuff is, is under control. Uh, again, being a private, we're gonna say, well, quasi-public or whatever you call it, uh, it is monitored. I mean, the permits, if you wanna, ever wanna permit again, you better check in right after you've been hunting for, you know, I don't know if Guilford can get to that point or not, but, uh, I know that's how the Water Authority handles it. Uh, you know, if you wanna permit, you better follow the rules, because there's, there's no gray area.
Has the Conservation Commission?
I have a question for Kevin.
Yep. Excuse me, sir. Okay. Has the Con- Conservation Commission had a, determined we're at a point where we have to, uh, start managing the deer population, or they're not ready yet to make that decision?
I don't have a comment from them. I know that they were, they were pro for the, the report and supported the report that was written, um, in terms of protecting the quality of the East River Reserve there. Um, so we can put that on their, their agenda for a formal comment from them. I don't wanna speak for them.
I mean, that, that would be a part, in some ways, from a proven, uh, policy, and because then the board can just say, okay, now we enact the policy because we have a problem. But I, I think, we have to know from them if a problem exists, and I'm sure that.
This commission went back and forth with, and that's the biggest issue we had in the beginning, was, was determining the problem.
Mm-huh.
And it's so hard to, there's some evidence, there's ways of evidence of, people wanna know how many deer on the property, and that's really hard to tell, because they're such a mobile, um, species, um, of knowing, is there twenty on their property, is there eight on this property? Because you're count, are you counting the same one twice and stuff? What, the, um, so the group looked at, basically looking at the studies from Audubon and also from the Regional Water Authority, um, both spoke about, we really couldn't get into the, um, the number of deer, but we know there's a problem on the property. And that's why this group's actually looking and recommending that we start the policy now and study as it goes along, because what they noticed was, Audubon noticed, they do bird counts for years since the nineteen fifties, if not earlier, doing bird counts on their properties and what type of birds are in and out of there. And as the deer program got going, they actually noticed species that weren't on the property were coming back to the property, and the vegetation was starting to thrive, causing the species to come back. Same thing with the Regional Water Authority, they found like the, the bird species are coming back, but they also noticed the vegetation's coming back, the vegetation on the water company's property is very important for water quality of the reservoirs. So they noticed the positive connection between the control of the deer and the environmental improvements in the property. So it's recommended by this plan is actually start the, the hunt, um, not the hunt, but the, the deer control on the property. And as it goes, determine if the vegetation and the environmental quality of the property is coming back. Uh, if there's no change in three years, the, they're recommending, the committee looks at it and say, do we go for another three years and see if it improves, or are we at a steady state? Uh, so it's pretty much what I believe this commission, this deer committee's actually recommending to the, sort of the board to go forward with, and to the Conservation Commission to go forward with, is, um, on the role of these other committees of watching and evaluating the, of any improvement to the property during the first three years of being initiated, because there's no way of telling, and then commissions, the board said, six months back and forth of determining, is there a problem, isn't there a problem, or how do we determine there's a problem to stop? It's gonna be a hard, a difficult call. There was, there's been work on the property, um, sort of started by the Ag Commission, or no, by the Ag Experiment Station as part of the timber, or, um, Harvest Improvement Project that they, they're doing on the property, where they actually did create some enclosures, um, around some new planted, planted trees out there, and they did notice the ones that were not protected were being chewed down, and the ones that were protected were thriving. So there, um, has been some shown of a, an, an issue on the property with, with deer.
Okay. Um, first of all, I wanna thank your committee, Harvey, and your leadership.
It was quite a challenge.
And the entire committee.
I'd like to thank you for this opportunity.
I bet you do. I'm surprised you're still talking, you think.
No, no, no.
Uh, but, uh, you're, you and your committee have done a fantastic job. I know it's been a hard.
The committee, again, I thank the committee. They worked very hard, and they were very dedicated.
And I know that the controversy that existed. And it's, uh.
We hung in there. I have one quick question for Kevin. You know what was never discussed, and I know back when I worked with Jennifer Alcock on the bioinventory report that we put together, um, the state has a lot of lists, threatened, endangered, of concern, lots of species lists. Do you have knowledge, as we go forward now in our evaluation and our real, really ongoing critical life within this ecosystem, have you records of that? Have you knowledge of this? I, I know sometimes it's not let out, because you don't want the public to know what's in danger.
We get some of the, I mean, we do get some of the, the bird communities and some of, um, providing us with what they've been seeing on the property for the past year or so. Um, as part of the original study, there was some Tibetan people and different specialists looking at the properties and noted, um, a couple of species of concerns on the property there. Um, I don't think anything really came up in danger, but I think there were some.
Kevin, what I'm getting at is, this is the ideal time.
Yep.
To establish a baseline.
Mm-huh.
If there are a few threatened or concerned species that are absent now, but it's just something to be aware of.
Right. And that's why I said we've been working with these different groups, and as I've been seeing things, we've been starting to develop lists, and I guess it's the way you, I guess you start.
But, um, we're, we're at a point now, I, I think, uh, again, thank you for the report, appreciate it and all your work. Um, I would like the Conservation Commission to weigh in on this.
Mm-huh.
And report back to this board.
Yep.
Uh, we'll put it on the agenda, I would say, at, at least a month from now, that's enough time for the Selectmen to do their own research as they wish, uh, and, and then we'll, we'll act on it one way or the other. Any changes we wanna make, I, I, now it's up to us, I guess, but I want the input.
But we're still available.
Okay.
But I'm sure you'll have questions.
I do want the input from the Conservation Commission. Uh, Bill, are there any statistics that you can give us on, uh, hunting injuries?
Um, I don't have the statistics. I spoke.
No, I don't either now, no, okay.
I did speak with, with one of our hunter accident reconstruction team members, and he said, to his knowledge, we have not had a, um, an injury caused by a bow hunter in the state on record.
Okay.
So that was big on our choice to use archery equipment.
Versus?
Versus firearms.
Firearms, okay. All right. I mean, that's my recommendation to the board, that we digest this, wait for comments from the Conservation Commission. Uh, in our own minds, we might wanna formulate a little bit different of way of administering the program and monitoring the program, but I think at this point, they've done a fantastic job, and we should just digest it.
I'd like to thank each of you.
Do we wanna formally accept the report?
Uh, that, if that's your motion, I would agree with it.
I would move that we formally accept the report and, uh, ask the, the Conservation Commission, uh, I guess, and the Natural Resources Officer to, uh, report back in a month, because there'll be a lot.
Within the month.
Within the, prior, prior to this, so we can talk.
Depends when they meet. I mean, do we pass their meeting?
They need the.
Fourth.
Fourth Wednesday of the month.
All right, so they'll.
So, um, the problem with that, I might not be at that meeting, because I'm, I'm vacation, but we may have to make a special.
Okay.
Meeting or somewhere around that.
Motion was made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? The only point I'm going to make is that when they're ready to report back to us, let me know. And then we'll put it on the agenda.
Sure.
And I'll take comments from the rest of the board, is when they would want it, I would, if we need a special meeting, we'll have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further?
Thank you all.
Motion on the table? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thanks, guys, appreciate it. Thanks for all your time.
Thank you.
Thanks. I would, I mean, it's been a while, it's not recommended for this year, I guess that's the way it is. I hope we can get it implemented for this year.
You know what, I want to make this mention.
We just, we need more Conservation Commission guys.
Okay, we're on item 10, discuss and take possible action to approve an ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Guilford, Chapter 142, blight as a result of the earlier public hearing. You have in front of you a legal notice and also the final copy of the ordinance. That would be in the town clerk's office for 30 days for residents to review it, assuming that we pass it today.
I would move that we approve the ordinance as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion on it? Okay. Again, Pam and Dennis, thank you very much for your work. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Appointments and resignations, I'm sorry. Act on an appointment of Richard Wallace to Planning and Zoning, and Zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission, as a regular member for a term to expire February 28, 2018. Move we approve? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Act on a recommendation to reappoint Louis Edward Montag to the Housing Authority for a term to expire March 31, 2019. Move we approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gary?
My only question is, the Republicans have renominated, is, okay, this is from the Housing Authority, not from the RTC.
No, 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 no.
I know, Rich used to be Chair of the RTC. I looked at it quickly.
He was?
Yeah, I think, Chair of the Nominating Committee, I think he was, like, four or five years ago.
Who was? Who are you talking about?
Richie Evans?
This is not Richie Evans.
No, but was, he presented this.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. No, he's the Housing Authority, he's not even, I don't think he's on even...
I thought he was on the Nominating Committee of the RTC a few years back.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Request for the use of town property, we have one, 12.1. Act on a request from the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce to use the green and to place a sign on the green advertising its chowder challenge for a cause taking place on September 27, 2014. Sign placement of September 9 through, September 1 through the 9th, 2015.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Committee reports, do we have any? Well, just a... What about, you want to talk about this coming weekend? Yeah. Okay. We have the dedication of the Covenant Point Memorial on Saturday at 2:00. And one hour prior to that, the Garden Club, Guilford Garden Club will kind of dedicate their improvements and landscaping project on the Woodruff property. So that'll be a two-event day. And then the following day, we will have the opening of the New England Trail with the trailhead down at Chittenden Park. There'll be quite a few people coming to town for that. And all weekend long, there's going to be kayak trips and hiking trips scheduled, and there are schedules in the Selectman's Office as well as downstairs in the Town Hall if anyone wants to get a copy of the schedules. Okay, thank you, Carl. Also want to take this opportunity to congratulate the 375th Committee again, and particularly the Subcommittee, which was headed by Edie Brown and Brian McCrone, that was in charge of putting on the event. We had Saturday, the commemoration of Guilford's participation in the Civil War. It was an all-day event. We had a bit of a cloudburst for 10 minutes, but it's no pun intended, it didn't dampen the spirits, no pun intended. We had a great turnout. I think the townspeople and all the visitors who came to this event really loved it, and it was great to see such participation. Believe me, I know the amount of work that went into putting this together by that Subcommittee and the 375th Committee itself. So again, thank you from the town. And this weekend, like Carl said, we have another celebration coming up. So if you have the time, please attend it.
I think this is more old business. But last meeting, we talked about the policy regarding transference of days for sick-time employees. So Mitch and I met, we came up with a sort of a draft plan, and we're having Mike Dorni review it. So we'll have, he's not here today, but hopefully, we met last week, so as long as it'll take Mike to review it, so hopefully we'll have it soon.
And speaking about, I guess we're in the old business now. Karen, in the Selectman's Office, has been receiving at our request, naming policies from other towns in the state. And we are starting to review that. Again, anybody who wants to join us on that Subcommittee, please let me know. Any new business?
Old business.
I'm sorry, Joe.
In reviewing the minutes of the last meeting, we noted that Finance and Human Resources had talked about changing limits on our loss-sharing arrangements. I'm losing the right word.
Stop-loss?
Stop-loss.
Okay.
Stop-loss. Those are potentially six-figure decisions. I'm wondering whether there ought to be some review either by Finance or Board of Selectmen specifically, or maybe a workshop, or at least some discussion of the choices that are made in, on that.
The Finance has reviewed it, and I was involved in that. Because it's a decision that involves both the Selectmen or the town and the school system, Dr. Friedman was involved with that, along with Assistant Superintendent Bodine. And we've agreed that the numbers just were so different that we just went ahead with the lower stop-loss, which meant that there would be less claims we would pay. It's part of a budgetary process, I agree with you, but we were charged, I felt we were charged with, both the Board of Ed charged the superintendent. And we agreed that the numbers were not, how should I say, it was too wide of a difference to continue the way we've been going, considering the amount of claims that we've had that have exceeded stop-loss or would have exceeded should we move from the $225,000 to $150,000. That's where we are right now.
Yeah, I have no knowledge that it was an improper or incorrect decision. I just, I would have, and I can still, I guess, see what some of the numbers were and what some of the choices are. Because, you know, it's a premium versus payout.
Premium base.
You know, the premium goes up if we go to a lower, to a lower stop-loss.
Yeah, I thought it was coming back to us to review or to discuss, not that...
Do we have that in the minutes? I don't think we did.
I thought she was, she said she had plenarally reviewed it.
The minutes implied that it had been decided.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Some, maybe some forum, whether it's at a meeting or just emails or just some circulation of information.
Next meeting, the Finance Director will be here and present the May reports, and I will ask her to include that.
Okay.
Okay, good. Any new business?
Joe, could I just publicly thank Pat Woodlett's...
Oh, yes, please. On Friday, some of us were invited by Pat to go to the State Capitol and sit while the Bond Committee voted on grants to towns. Guilford received, through Pat's hard work, a grant to cover expenses of Covenant Point Project. We received a grant to help with the visitors' kiosk, which will be constructed over in front of, or next to the community center, which will allow people to receive all types of information about Guilford and historic spots to visit, as well as information about the town. A large grant was received by the VFW to construct a new hall on their property here in town. And also hospice received a grant that we're all voted on positively. So I want to, again, thank Pat for her hard work and getting us this money to help with all of these very worthwhile projects. Well said, and I agree 100%. We're going to miss Pat.
Yes, sure.
Okay. Anything on new business? Okay. Public forum, I don't see anybody wishing to address the board. Consider and take possible action on a request for employee to carry over vacation time to the next fiscal year. We will require an executive session, and will only need the board. I will handle the particulars in the absence of the Human Resource Director, who is on vacation today. Do I have a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, yes.
You have the inconvenience.
I need a motion to come out of the executive session, please.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I'll move that we grant the employee's request to carry over vacation time into the next fiscal year, which she'll be using according to the policy.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
So Carl, I apologize, I had a, I have a client that I had to reschedule. So this weekend, can you...